Should you do that again, just in case?
Yeah, we won't have to do the.
Okay, I think we're good to go.
I'm gonna recall the meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, if you just want to start over with the ordinance, I do have the recording of the other one, but if you want to start.
From the beginning, we won't do the pledge.
Sure, that's fine.
Meeting call to order is today's February first town council meeting and town council chambers eleven seventy Main Street is now six fourteen P M. And we already did roll call. Everyone's here except for Councilman Lachardi. So we'll move on to the ordinance.
First reading of ordinance amending appendixy traffic ordinances and the code of ordinance of the town of West Warwick.
Move the ordinance.
Second, moving seconded, Al. Can you hear us, Al?
Yeah, I can hear you. Yeah, the first one on Roundway Drive, the stop sign. That was requested by Councilman Lachardi. The Traffic Committee studied it and they agreed with it. The second one, the intersection of Andrews Avenue and Willow Street, that was brought to the attention of Major Oshinbo by Derek Reed. Apparently, there's been a horrible parking problem on all four corners and including according to Derek. And if he's there, I'll let him address it, even on the sidewalks. Major Oshinbo went out, took a look at it, and he discussed it with me. While we have a general ordinance that says no parking twenty feet from the corner. Because of the severity of this, the situation, I discussed it with Major Oshinbo. And we both came to the conclusion that it would probably be best in this instance. If we gave the normal notice that we give for all traffic ordinances. And so everybody's aware of it and we go with a specific ordinance. Keep the no parking twenty feet from all four corners. As I said, it's in the general ordinances to begin with the Major Oshinbo. And I both felt based on what Derek had told us that it would be best to be specific. I don't know whether Derek's there or not.
No. Okay, thank you. Any questions? Comments? Any public comment on the ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda approval of the minutes from January eighteenth executive session and January eighteenth regular town council meeting. And cancellation of taxes is requested by the tax assessor.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Liquor license, the town council, the council acting as liquor commission request from Warwick Hotel Partners LLC doing businesses Spring Hill Suites for a class B V liquor license.
Move approval of the liquor license.
Second, moving second, any discussion?
So this is a brand new license.
It is, I believe that the owners of the hotel have changed, therefore they're applying for a new license in their name.
Okay.
This is the one that's in between, there's a road in between.
From Cox, right?
Yeah, Cox and Hotel.
Where they're gonna build the, what we just.
Meat packaging company there, yep.
Yep.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Appointments and resignations appointment to the recreation committee, Paul Richards for term ending two one twenty four, Chris Messier for term ending two one twenty four. Michael Govan for term ending two one twenty four, Vincent Marzullo for term ending two one twenty five and Derek Reed for term ending two one twenty five. And if you would like an explanation, I can give you one.
Move approval of the resolution.
Second, moving second, Sarah.
Um, it had come to my attention that this was tabled back in November, the appointments of all these members. And the whole reason why this came to front or to our attention was because the members didn't have expiration dates on their terms. When their appointments were put on the agenda back in November, it was tabled. Because you guys were still working on the resolution, once the resolution was complete, it didn't come back off the table to appoint the members with expiration dates. So in the spirit of you guys wanting staggered terms, and this is obviously, we could change these terms if you don't agree with them. But in the spirit of what you guys were looking to do as far as staggering the terms, the three legacy members we put on a two year term or suggest. And then the two newest members to a three year term, therefore, when they all come up for renewal, they will be staggered three and two.
That works for me.
As long as the, as long as the recreation board doesn't have a problem with it and.
No, actually, it came to my attention because I was approached by them, you know, with the concern that there wasn't.
The only other suggestion would be that, or it says future reappointments, we want to put appointments slash reappointments because you don't know.
Necessarily.
Full time spot.
Second. Moving seconded, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
And again, will we have to post that? How many times will we have to post that?
I believe pre your council rules, it's three times. I don't know if that's.
Is that something that we can review because it seems to take an awful lot of time to get things? Yeah, so I think we might take a look at that, not just for this, in general, whether that has to happen three times.
If it's in the charter, it's a.
No.
It was a resolution.
Actually, Tim, that brings up a good question because this was a resolution, I believe, that was passed by a prior council.
Yes.
And I, my understanding is that resolutions such as that.
Resolutions.
End with the council that.
Resolutions are opinions of that particular council, they can be.
Right, so.
But do they, is it like Sarah just said, they end with that council or?
No, they don't end it till someone changes it.
Okay.
Physically change the resolution.
Theoretically, a hundred years ago, you were right when the politics were different, but resolutions have always continued on until they've been changed.
So if we could actually have that on the next agenda, a resolution changing that, because the three times, I, we want to give people fair shot that they understand it. But it takes a long time to get things filled. And if we can move that along, I think that would.
No, they have to be a certain, like, if we do it three week, three times, it has to be a certain timeframe apart from each other as well.
Well, we do three meetings.
No, no, but advertised.
Could be six to eight weeks.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, we could, not that we want to meet three days in a row.
No, no, no.
You know. I'm just saying. Right.
From appointment to when they get the.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
So if we could have that on the next agenda?
Absolutely.
Does anybody know why? No, we'll discuss on the next one. Curious as to why they would even do that to begin with.
Okay.
Yeah, he was on the police report.
Are we?
Um.
Sorry, so we were still just talking.
Just about moving it, yes.
All right.
And we, and we voted for nothing, yes, so. Did we vote?
Yes.
For nothing.
Are we also gonna, are we still gonna advertise for that, for that opening though, for the next meeting?
Yeah, we should do it at least once.
Yes, and then if we decide to change it.
Whatever the law is right now, you'd have to follow that until you've changed it.
Right, right, exactly.
Going to three until it gets changed.
So there will be.
Jessica.
It'll be on there as an alternate opening, as an alternate.
So we can't do the alternate until she's fully approved, so we can't put the alternate on for the next one.
Exactly, but again, until that ordinance changes or that resolution changes, if you're gonna do it by ordinance. And you get the first two readings of the ordinance and then twenty days before it comes.
We can just do it by resolution.
Yeah.
But if you do it by resolution, that changes everything, but as long as that resolution has not changed, you'd follow the old one.
Right, yep.
So we have to put Jessica on this next agenda as well.
No, no.
No, Jessica can be appointed. The alternate opening will have to be on, because it's not on there.
Well, no.
No, because this one here is the first time on here.
So the opening for the full versus the open, they always treat alternates differently than they do for four positions. So the full position is vacant right now.
Correct.
You're asking that Jessica Ruber would be appointed, which you just did. Jessica moving up now creates the opening for.
The alternate.
Alternate, which technically, since Jess has not been appointed yet, she has, but it's not in writing, she doesn't get the notice and everything.
Right.
That's not gonna happen till tomorrow. Tomorrow will be the opening of the alternate position. So theoretically, even though Rainey has applied for it, Rainey would really have to apply for the alternate position like everybody else.
But we just. Put on there three times.
Right, but soon I'm getting, since he applied for the full time position, he didn't apply for the alternate position. You can keep his resume.
But the, the full time still has to be on there three times, right, according to the resolution that exists.
The opening has to be, which has already been done for three times.
Uh, I would have to look back at old agendas.
That's me three times, I don't know if today's the third or today is the first.
I can go back and.
Because I believe that.
I think it is the first because we put somebody on the planning like two meetings ago. And then it was nothing. And then this one, it wasn't on the.
Can I interrupt?
I think.
This is your, this is your first, the last time you accepted the resignation of Joe Godozak. And that became, then had an opening. And Jessica submitted her application to move up, but I'm pretty sure this is the first time that Jessica's.
Second. It's on the January eighteenth agenda, Planning Board vacancy with term to expire is on the January eighteenth. So this is the second agenda, so realistically, if we're following our own resolution, it can't be on until the next agenda. But.
Have the clerk confirm where you are as far as.
Yeah.
The appointment process, report back to the council and then on that issue procedurally of changing the resolution, you can address that at the same time. But you're gonna, you're gonna, you run to the rules of the old resolution until you change that resolution.
So let's step back. And I would like to actually table the consideration for the planning board because it has not been advertised three times.
Second.
Well, since you guys already passed it, just file, just move in second, a motion to vacate what the council just did. And then vote on that, which brings it back and then you can table it.
So.
You've already, you already passed it.
Yes, yep. So we will move to vacate the approval of G two.
Right.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion to table the item.
Second.
Moving second to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, so we address all that next. Okay, um. Request from Cindy Ferry for appointment to the pension committee for term ending eleven eighteen twenty twenty three.
Move the appointment.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? I think Cindy's here tonight. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Congratulations, Cindy. Thanks for stepping up.
Stepping up.
All right, request from Derek Reed for appointment as tree warden.
Move the name of Derek Reed to as appointment tree warden.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion?
When was the last time we had a tree warden?
We had, we had one, actually.
Mark.
Really?
Yeah.
For a long time and then.
Hard to get, he won't get.
Haven't heard from him.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
I haven't seen him around town, so.
Because I always seem to remember that being on the agenda is always an opening.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay. New business, report from legal counsel to the town council regarding med recycler.
Gentlemen, Mary Beth. There seems at every meeting, questions come up about med recycler. And I spoke with David about it and he asked me if it was possible to give a report that kinda. Puts, puts med recycler in, in context to answer what I hope will be all, all the questions. And there's, there's two parts to this that keep coming up. The first part I'll address is the council involvement in the whole med recycler situation. It came up when it was before us and it keeps coming up now under different guises. And I think the best way, I like to read into the record, a letter that I wrote to former council member John D'Amico. On March second, two thousand twenty one, I think this clears up the council situation. In response to your request asking for my opinion as legal counsel regarding a request you received from a resident. To make a presentation to the town council regarding med recycler application. To open a facility in the town of West Warwick to the planning board. I must advise you that it would be inappropriate for the council to entertain or allow such a presentation. First, there is a very strong ethical consideration. The state law and the ethics committee rulings make it very clear that a town council member with appointing authority. Over members of a local board or commission must not in any way be involved in matters before such a board or commission. The matter of med recycler is one that is currently pending before the planning board. A board whose members are appointed by the town council. Any comments or involvement in this matter would, in my opinion, be a breach of ethics and conflict of interest. That could result in complaints being filed with action being taken by the Rhode Island Ethics Commission regarding such contacts. Conduct is my further opinion that in the event of such, in the, if in the event such complaints were filed. That there would be a finding of an ethical breach of conduct. Second, there is the matter of procedure. Med recycler application is a matter that pursuant to state statutory law is a matter that is at this stage. Of proceeding is in an active application currently under consideration by the planning board. For a hearing and decision, the town council has no jurisdiction in this matter. The state statutes are clear that a matter such as this has a three step public meeting, hearing process. Before the planning board, first master plan, second preliminary plan and third final plan. Med recycler has had master plan approval. And is waiting for R I D E M review and all of the details to be finalized. Before it can be considered by the planning board for preliminary approval. Any decision by the planning board that has finality to which a party to the hearing disagrees. May be appealed to the zoning board of review upon rendering a decision of an appeal to the zoning board. Then the next step in the process would be to the Rhode Island Superior Court. State law does not provide for the town council jurisdiction in the process. Finally, I must advise you that in the event that the subject matter might be raised in public. Comment at the town council meeting, no member of the town council should make any response. I'm providing this advice for reasons stating above and also because I believe it would constitute an open meetings. Violation because a med recycler would not have received any prior notice of discussion before the council. If you have any questions, let me know, Aldi Fury Legal Counsel. One last comment on that, I cannot urge council members too strongly. That when med recycler is mentioned, especially in public comment, your standard response should be based on. Advice of legal counsel, I am not allowed to comment. The second area is, is more of a, a travel of the case, just so everyone. Counsel and the members of the public will know where, what has happened and where it stands. In, on March twentieth, two thousand twenty, med recycler filed an application. To, to place a facility for paralysis system. For medical waste. That, the application was filed on April seventeenth. It went before, excuse me, that was in two thousand nineteen. On April seventeenth, it went before the T R C. At that meeting, there was the town planner, the fire chief, the fire marshal, building official, wastewater superintendent. D P W director, the police chief. Chief Verone asked a number of questions and after the meeting was over, the T R C. Voted to send a positive recommendation to the planning board. Planning board held a hearing on May fourth, two thousand nineteen on master plan. Master plan is purely conceptual. It does not give the applicant any authority to do anything. All it does is the applicant comes in, presents its case as to what it would like to do. And if the, the planning board says, okay, we approve of your concept. That's all we're doing is approving of your concept. You can now go on and fill a whole bunch of requirements before you're allowed to submit for preliminary plan. Those requirements can be engineering, they can be roads, they can be in, in home developments. All retention basins. And in this particular case, the major one was getting the approval of D E M. Until such time as they receive that approval, they cannot even file for preliminary plan approval. Which gives them the authority to go the next step and actually begin the process. So they did file on August second, excuse me, they did file. With D E M for permission to put this pyro, pyro analysis. A plant in the town of West Warwick. And on July thirteen, D E M denied their application. On August second of this year, they appealed to the D E M administration adjudication division. So the status of this matter now is that it, the D E M decision denying their right. To create this business is before the adjudication division on appeal. At, having said that, there is absolutely nothing pending before the town of West Warwick as of this moment. Depend, the future depending on what the adjudication division does, it may or may not come back to West Warwick. But if so, if it does come back, it will again come back to the planning board and not the town council. And that's, that's the status of it.
Any questions from Al from the council?
Just the, the only thing that keeps getting brought up to us is the tangible tax more than anything. So, you know, that's.
I would, I, my suggestion even on that is no comment because med recycler. Has, has notice of a report being delivered to the town council. They have no notice of anything regarding any taxes or anything else. So any discussion of that before this town council, in my opinion, is a violation of the open meetings law.
And I think so, as the tax assessor actually stated that it is being assessed during this recent tax assessment. So that's the answer we've received. Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Is there public comment on this item?
At public comment, at the very end.
All right, thank you.
Okay, report from the tax assessor relating to elderly tax exemption.
Sal?
I'm South Secocio Tax Assessor, town of West Warwick. I believe last week I emailed all the council members and town manager. Little brief history on the senior exemption, along with the state report that was published about twelve thirty one seventeen. So those numbers have changed a little bit. For, for a lot of the towns, depending if they had revaluations, the number part, the, the tax part of it is probably the same. But the values might be a little bit different. We do not have a elderly exemption on motor vehicles in town, that would have been one thing you, they could have think about doing. But there's not going to be any more motor vehicle tax starting next year.
It's phased out, yeah.
This year, the speaker Sakachi already said that this year, they are keeping the law in effect. So this year is supposed to be the last year we have a motor vehicle tax. We have a little over eighteen hundred elderly exemptions in town. Totalling four hundred and seventy two thousand dollars.
Sorry, what was the amount?
Four hundred and seventy two thousand dollars in tax dollars. It's eleven thousand change per exemption, which equals to two hundred and fifty eight dollars.
Out of those eighteen hundred, how many single family homes are in the town of West Warwick? A little over ten thousand?
Yes. I'm gonna, I'll talk about this some more, we also have what they have is the variable exemption, which took the place of the tax freeze. Which ended, I think it was close to, almost getting close to be twenty years. This is like a circuit breaker, where you hit a certain income amount, you get more, you get a little bit off of your taxes.
And we have how many residents still on tax freeze?
Two. We only have two on the original tax freeze. We only have eighty two. On the variable exemption. I mean, I don't know why. The top, the most you can get out of it, I think, was three hundred and fifty or three seventy five. Maybe think about tweaking the levels on that or adding more. If you look through the exemptions from the other towns, some of them have more than five levels. Some had ten.
From what I read, South Kingston's the place to go.
Yeah, I mean, no.
Just saying.
That is some giveaway a lot, but you know, Barrington, I mean, they, I mean, they're a little more affluent than, than we are here. They can afford a little bit. If we were to double the exemption from two fifty eight up to five change. It would cost, it would, it would increase the tax rate by thirty cents. In, in a cost of approximately a hundred and twenty five dollars.
Thirty cents per thousand.
Thirty cents per thousand, if we double the amount of the.
So you're talking average house in West Warwick's about three hundred thousand, so everybody else would see a tax increase of ninety dollars?
Hundred and twenty five.
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty five dollars out of that, that's if you doubled it. And these other versions, I know this year is a tight year. The taxes, we're just starting to get preliminary numbers in on the revale, still doing studies.
When the freeze existed, what was it, you had to live here, was it ten years?
Seven years, I think.
Um, I don't know what it was before, before we started.
A little bit of a history that I got on, I think it was seven years of residency, but, you know, that's talking to people who were dealing with it back then, so.
Yeah, no, there are other things too, I mean, there are, I think there's enabling legislation that let towns do a deferral program where you would sign up. The, any extra tax by a tax increase would get deferred until the property was sold to a, someone out of the family who died or went to someone else.
Yeah, I know, I know Coventry had the free, has the freeze, but, but again, it is a ten year. But I know personally, I know when I bought my grandmother's house, she was frozen and I, when I went to the closing, I thought the taxes were eight. And I, when I went to closing, I thought the taxes were $1,800 a year. Soon as I, soon as it changed names.
Right.
I received a supplemental tax bill for $1,700. It was almost doubled. I was like, oh my God.
And that was just that one year.
That was that one year, so then I started paying at $3,600 a year.
Some places you, it goes from the first year you defer it. So if you, right, if you start deferring, it could end up being more. Some people don't want to put that on their kids, but you know, it's either your kids or the rest of the public. You know, the money's got to come from somewhere.
Now, freezing, I, I think is a little tough. I, I understand what people want and.
I, I like the tax freeze if it's a statewide type thing, but for little municipalities, it's a lot harder to absorb that. A lot harder, you know, like I believe Florida has the, the freeze. You know, obviously a big state like that, it's a lot easier for them, but for us, it'd be very difficult.
Yeah, if you had a blanket that, because I'm sure the state supplements those freezes, so it's probably in their budget. So, so you'd have to look kind of like when the former speaker who put the tax, the car taxes in, in the rare saying, within five years, we're no longer be paying car taxes. That's a blanket and they supplement in all the cities and towns with that money. So, so if they froze, if, if the state house decided, hey, we're going to do this for all our seniors across the state that they're frozen at 65, I can agree with you because now they would have to supplement that money to the cities and towns.
Right.
So, you know, it, it is a little difficult. And as you said, you know, 400,000, yes, and trust me, you all want to help seniors out, veterans out, whoever else out. But us as council people are telling, we're going to help the veterans out, all the seniors out this year, which is a great thing. But yet we're giving you an automatic, we're not even knowing what our budget is. We're giving you $125 tax increase on, on your home. So that's not included, that's just, that's not just, that's multifamily, single businesses and whatever else.
Is it, I'm not, I'd have to look, I'm going to see if, is it on two family occupied? I think it is.
Two family occupied is senior exemption, yes.
Yeah. In fact, if you didn't own a house, I mean, you go into any of the categories, the way that it's written.
Yeah, two, I know two families owner occupied is eligible for senior exemption in single families.
Something with the variable exemption, if you want to look at poverty, poverty levels, maybe change the criteria for that. I don't know when the last time those were updated.
Looking at the numbers that are on there, they're pretty low.
Yes, yes, they are.
I agree, they, they, that would be a good place to look to, to help.
So, I mean, I don't know anyone that could actually have a house.
With a $9,000 income.
With, you know, under 15, I mean.
I, I would, I wouldn't mind looking at something like that to help out.
So, I mean, that's up to, it's up to you guys to, to look at and decide and.
Does anybody have any questions for Sal on this? And then, you know, we could still continue working on it and get ideas, but you have a layout of all the cities and towns. And if any council member wants to bring it forward and we could talk about it during budget time or whatever, and we can build it in there. That's, that's the last time we did that with the exemptions. We built it into the budget during budget workshops, because that way there we were able to finagle that around. So, I mean, we're getting into budget season. We got our schedules coming up in February and March, right? So, you know, we could start discussing it if you, if you want to, but at least it's out there, you have it, you can look at it. Like I said, I know I looked at South Kingston, they look like, you know, I know the house is very expensive out there, but it was, looks like a, a great package for the senior citizens.
And the, the, the more, the more criteria you need, the more we, work we have to do. It's in, that's, that's it. We have a half, well, we, we have Shailen doing half days in there too. But now again, I think they have to apply every year.
Yeah, East Providence is a homestead tax.
I'm just amazed by looking through all these different cities and towns, the, how complicated some of them are. I mean, I'm like, who understands any of this? It's, they've got so many different criterias for so many different people, it's, I don't get it. So I, I agree, I agree, we'll try and keep it as simple as we possibly can.
I, I know I put it out there on social media over the weekend before the snowstorm. And it's interesting because it seems like I've gotten between 10 or 20 responses that were asking for the applications that weren't aware of the application for veterans and for seniors, it was a mix. So it's going to be interesting to see how many you get within the next month or so.
What, what was in that report for our town, the veterans exemption was changed. The veterans exemption is 258.
Okay.
In West Warwick, not, not 190.
Yeah, even, and they were even excited about the 190. So, you know, it's just, it's just, I, I showed them the link, I gave them the website, where to get the document. And be interesting to see how many people come in within the next month or so.
So certainly we wouldn't want to make any changes till we know what that number is going to be.
But if, I don't know if you've seen an influx over the, you know, it's only the weekend, it's only Tuesday.
We're not getting thousands more.
No.
No.
But if you're getting 20 more, it's, it's 20 more, it's 20 people that didn't have that and it's a savings to their pockets.
There's another, there's a month and a half left too. Isn't, there's a statutory deadline that just went past. I've extended it to March 15th.
Now, Sal, there, there was one question that was brought up to me over the weekend. And I told him I would ask you, I'm always asking now, is if their parents owned the house, owned it. Obviously they get to a certain age, they want to sign it over to their children to protect them from going into a nursing home or whatever. But if they're still living in the house, are they eligible for exemption?
If their name is not part of the title to the house, no.
Okay.
Where, whether it be a life estate, a trust, something like that, they would, their name would still be on the house.
With a trust or a life estate.
They would still get it, but they're still liable for the nursing home, for Medicare, they'd still be able to get them. So the only way to get around it is to take it completely out of their name. And then they would not be eligible anymore.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you, Sal.
Resolution authorizing payment for the services of the police navigator clinician from American Rescue Plan funds.
Chief?
Hi, good evening, honorable town council.
Move the resolution. Move the resolution.
Second.
Move a second.
You're on.
Good evening, honorable town council and town manager Mark Knott. As you are all likely aware, the Westwark Police Department has entered into a contract with the Providence Center to provide the services of a full-time mental health clinician to work within the Westwark community. The clinician has witnessed a marked increase in mental health needs within the community, especially since the start of the current COVID-19 pandemic. I'm respectfully requesting that the funding source for the police department's mental health clinician be changed from a budgetary line item in the police department's budget to an appropriate use of American Rescue Plan funds. If approved, it would facilitate some much needed training for both the clinician and select officers to help address the needs of our Westwark residents.
Would, would this, like, would this just be for this year's budget?
My, my request.
For the, for the funds, I mean, I just want to make sure that the funds are still there from us going forward for future years. That's, that's kind of my question.
Yeah, so I, ideally, if, if my, my request was approved, it would, it would provide some funding for the current fiscal year, the last three quarters of fiscal year 2022, as well as fiscal year 2023 in its entirety. My, my, obviously my goal would be to always fund this, regardless of whether or not. I, I guess my, my ask is that we take the money for the three quarters and, and fiscal year 2023 to provide a little bit of leeway budgetarily to provide that training to our select officers as well as the clinician. But we have, we have a lot of work to do and my goal is to keep that clinician with us.
That was my only concern, I want to make sure.
Absolutely, yeah.
But this resolution does not cover future years.
Correct, correct.
This is just for the remainder of this year and for next fiscal year.
This resolution is strictly authorizing us to use American Rescue Plan funds. And we may look to change that in the future. This is a viable option now, as we receive opioid settlement money is another source.
I just, I remember when we, when we initially, when we initially put this on, maybe it was Kristen, when we talked about it, like, I forget who, who we discussed it was making sure that it was funded, that we continued to fund it. Because then we may be able to get other potential grants or what different, especially with the opioid thing, to make sure it's like a permanent, a permanent.
But that's not what this is, it's not permanent, yeah, I want to make sure that, I'm going to say it again, sorry, this is.
The position is permanent.
No.
By funding, so.
Yes, yes.
Not, nothing is, nothing is permanent.
Trying to help his budget this year.
We, I agree wholeheartedly, it's a need.
Yeah, nothing's permanent, nothing's permanent.
But we don't want anyone to think that is.
It's a line item that we continue to have. I just want to point out, I, you know, Councilor Messier, I know you brought this a long time ago, Chief Knott and whoever else. About a year ago, a year and a half ago, yeah. And, and, you know, I, I supported it, but when you actually see the individual come to your house and do her job, you have a whole different perspective. And I got to say, the most professional person, you know, took a lot off my plate over the last week. And it was great to see that individual in action. And, you know, I commend you and your department. And I got to say, it, it's, and I'm sure my situation is a minor situation. And I'm sure there's much bigger situations out there. And I got to say, this is an asset to this town and this community and, and it's definitely needed and. I mean, I think in the long run, it would benefit to have two, like in the future. I mean, I know there's not necessarily funds for it, but if.
This is not about the position, this is about the funding only. So this is about the funding and moving it and fine, so this is not saying.
I support this, I just, I was wanting to clarify.
So it is.
Funding later too.
Yes, that's where, that's where I was going, that's where, that's really where I was going.
But this is just asking for American Rescue Plan funds to be used to fund this position now. It's not about whether the position's there two years from now, three years, or, or is there tomorrow?
I'll support it then too, so.
Okay, and I, I agree, I suspect we all will, but this is about using American Rescue Plan funds to take, yes.
Yes, that is correct.
Sorry, I made that more complicated.
That's fine, nope.
Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, eyes have it.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Resolution authorizing select part-time non-union employees of the Civic Center ice rink to receive a salary increase for 2022.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move a second, comment, Lori? Come back from vacation or something.
I said too, I don't know, I look tan, must be the wind up there, that wind tunnel. Um, I have some employees that have been there for quite some time, they've never received a anything, a raise, nothing. They are absolutely wonderful, the amount of people that they deal with on a daily basis is crazy. And I did put it in my budget for the FY22. So their money is there and we're doing very well. So it's just a 3% raise, it's for three employees, one has been there since 2016. And the other three have been there, they were there prior, they used to work in the snack bar and they started maintenance in 2018, so.
And we're talking 45 cents an hour per employee?
Yeah, nothing crazy.
Any questions for Lori?
No, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, everything's going through the roof right now, 3% is nothing compared to inflation.
Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, eyes have it.
Thank you.
Resolution authorizing payment for replacement of banner brackets in business districts from American Rescue Plan funds.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move a second, discussion, Mark?
I'll defer some comments to Jeff if he'd like, but we've been working with the Arctic Village Association now for months on the, our banner bracket and flower hanging issues. The ones we have now, a majority of them are damaged or are in a weakened state that they're starting to make a hazard. So we've looked for several different companies and got quotes to replace them. We seem to have a satisfactory one now. And I'm proposing the use of American Rescue Plan funds because the U.S. Department of Treasury has identified general government service expenses to revenue replacement allowance and enhancements for the recovery of tourism and hospitality, both as eligible uses of American Rescue Plan funds. So we're proposing to encumber $7,731.16 for the purchase of these banners and brackets from Banner Saber out of Britton, Michigan.
Any questions for Mark? Jeff?
How you doing, Jeff Caldwell, Assistant DPW Director? The brackets that are up there now are falling apart. And Barbara's doing a wonderful thing with what she's trying to do to make things look great. And the brackets that they're proposing are spring loaded. So we won't have a problem with taking them all apart every time we want to put banners up. They'll just, you can just bend them up, put the banners on.
They have them in Phoenix, correct?
Correct, the same ones you, they're basically the same ones that you have in Phoenix. And they've been there for how many years now?
At least 15.
Yeah, they're, they're basically indestructible, you might have to replace a spring every now and again, which is nothing. But with the way, you know, the, the way things look this spring with the flowers and the banners and everything, it looked wonderful. And I really respect what she's trying to do and I think this is something that needs to be done. Because once we do them, you're looking at 20, 25 years probably before you have to replace them again. And the ones that are there now are just, they're falling apart from where they've been screwed in so many times. So.
And I would guess it makes you guys' job easier too, when you're, when you're changing them out, right?
Absolutely, absolutely, it's, it's, it'll be a lot faster. Because now you're, with, with the way you are now, you have to bring wrenches and everything else and hope that you don't strip it out when you take it off and it will go back up. It's, it's more of a hassle than it's worth.
No, actually, I think the flower is probably the best they've ever looked was last year. And I know you worked with Barbara and Hat Toys, you know, and they, they guided you in fertilizing and everything else. And, you know, I know pictures went all over social media about it and compared it to East Greenwich and whatever. We had the best flowers in the state. They would have been up longer if we didn't get the hurricane down, that we had to take them down early.
They came down, they were.
Several phone calls asking where they were put, because they'd like to go take some and put them in their yard, trust me. But I think that the investment is well worth it and.
And, and it's expanded, it's not just Arctic anymore, it's gone down to Royal River Point and, you know, it's, I know she's looking at Phoenix, I know she was looking at Crompton, so.
Yeah, she, it's a wonderful thing what she's doing and it just makes everything look better.
Well, let's not forget Natick.
No, I, well, I'm not, you gotta get with her.
All right.
Any questions for Jeff?
No.
Any other comment for the town manager? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Memorandum of agreement, addendum to 21-24 CBA regarding fleet assistant mechanic.
Move approval of the MOA.
Second.
Move a second, discussion?
This is before you, was in a mission, when we crafted the Council 94 contract, there was one series of boxes that was left out of the employee grid. So this is essentially inserting that, so when we redo our contract in two and a half years, two years, we'll, we'll have this built in properly. So it's essentially just identifying the fleet name as assistant mechanic and their salary scale for the remainder of this CBA.
To, to clarify, it's not adding it, it was already agreed upon, it was part of the CBA, it just didn't make it to the printed version.
Correct.
Yes.
Any other comment for Mark? Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Approval of requests from the police chief for purchase of four police vehicles in an amount not to exceed
Move approval of the resolution.
Move a second, chief?
Good evening again. As part of the police department's 10-year capital improvement program pertaining to the police vehicle fleet, I am respectfully requesting that the town council consider approving the purchase of four new police vehicles for use by the patrol division. The purpose of the CIP is to enhance safety by providing officers with vehicles which are safe to operate under emergency driving conditions, are properly equipped with the necessary equipment, and to reduce the cost associated with maintaining an aging fleet. The frontline patrol vehicle operates on a 24-hour a day basis and the mileage and wear and tear accumulates at a rapid pace. I am requesting authorization to purchase four vehicles from Central Chrysler Dodge Jeep of Rainham, Massachusetts, using the 2022 State of Rhode Island contract bid pricing.
Any questions for the chief?
And where's the, where the source of the funds associated?
Sorry, I, I should have included that. The, the source of the funding is, is actually from our police detail vehicle fund account as a funding source. We've been utilizing that for many years now. It's not a budgetary line item, it's actually money that vendors pay for the use of detailed police cars on details. So right now that account has about $201,000 in it, more than enough to purchase these vehicles and still have some money in that account.
Thank you.
Thank you. Basically, we're recycling and making money to get out new cars.
Correct, correct.
Like the rescue fund.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for the chief? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution requesting the town of West Works General Assembly. Resolution requesting the Town of West Warwick's General Assembly delegation to support the installation of a Luso Americans Veterans Monument at the Rhode Island Veterans Memorial Cemetery.
Somebody move it.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Move a second. I put this on the agenda and I'll just give you a brief history of it. Uh, Ricardo Morado, he's actually an East Providence, uh, councilman, um, very, uh, active still here in West Warwick though. A lot of family members in the Portuguese community, um, along with Father Victor from St. Anthony's Church. He's actually raised, I think he said to me tonight, and Rose, I think you were part of the, part of that conversation, of $20,000 so far to get this monument installed at the veterans cemetery. Um, so, but he's looking to see if the state would help with the rest. So when he brought this forward to me, I actually spoke to Rep. Noray himself, um, because he and I were just having a brief discussion about it. He's actually supportive of this. He's actually donated almost $2,500 to this, um, fund, um, 15 out of his own and a thousand from somewhere else. So he's, he's very, uh, supportive of this. So, um, you know, having that conversation with him, I just wanted to let him know that, you know, we as a council might be supporting this and bringing it forward to, to our legislators so they can bring it forward at the State House. Um, I think, uh, this is something for the Portuguese community here in West Warwick and the veterans in the veterans cemetery that this, this monument be installed. And like I said, Father Victor is, is the leader behind this, and he's got East Providence support now and figuring that he's, uh, been here now, I think a few years in West Warwick as the, uh, priest over at St. Anthony's. Um, he wanted, he, he, he didn't realize he was on tonight. He wanted to be here. Unfortunately, he is at a wake tonight and dealing with of, of employee of ours. So, um, he, he, I told him he didn't have to come. So, but he would have liked to come, but I told him, don't worry about us. We'll, I'll let him know how we make out tomorrow. But that's, that's, that's the gist of it. So if you have any questions or comments.
Is there any downside for, one, one comment I do have on, in the resolution itself, it refers to us as the city of West Warwick. So that should be changed to say the town of West Warwick. Is there any downside for us doing it?
Hey.
No.
Like I said, i- it's, it's, it's Father Victor's passion that he's pushing this. Um, he's looking for the state to help fund it. So it's just saying that we're supporting.
Any idea how much it costs?
Six, about $60,000.
And he's raised 20?
He's raised 20. On his own. I think he said 50 to 60,000 dollars.
He's raised 20 here through St. Anthony's?
Through wherever. He, this is.
So not from the gentleman that you originally talked about?
He was part of that, probably part of that 20,000. Oh, yeah. Like I said, he, he, he told us tonight. I kind of interrupted Rose actually when she was talking to, sorry. But, but again, um, you know, I just wanted to let him know it was on the agenda. And he told me that they raised 22, I think it was, or $20,000. I want to say, I'm just going to round it off at 20. And he said that it would be 50 to 60,000 dollars. So, you know, and this is a time, yeah, the state does have a, a, a little bit of money to play with per se. So I don't know if they can use some of that towards the veterans cemetery and improving it. I mean, personally, I, I think, you know, anybody who's gone up there and visited, I think the state does a, a good job on our veterans cemetery. But again, you know, they have all different nationality monuments, and so Father Victor would like a Portuguese monument up there. So that's, that's why I told him I put it on for discussion and consideration.
I support it. I'm proud of anybody, I don't care what the heritage is, uh, that puts on a uniform for this country. And, uh, you know, if we can honor the Portuguese community that way as well, I'm all for it.
Any other comment? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Claim from Linda David in the amount of $302.
Move approval of the claim. I know it says denied on it, but just to get the conversation going.
Move in second. Discussion?
I'm a little confused on this one.
Said there was no, there were no estimates, but there is one attached. I, so I'm, I wasn't sure exactly. I gather there was a, there is a pothole or was a pothole on Main Street. Looked through the claim form, there are no estimates attached. So this may come, have come later. DOT did not approve it.
Yeah, cause they said it's a state road, uh, city, town road.
Yeah.
It's not a state road. And.
But there is something for Pachelli's, from, uh, Pachelli's Autobody attached. So I'm not sure exactly why.
If, unless.
I don't know.
Well, can explain Mr. Gill's rationale. You might want to table this only because there's no evidence besides the motorist's report that there was a pothole. Normally, APW follows it up, verifies that there was a pothole, or the police reported the case that there was one. But.
I'm just trying to see. Yeah, cause usually there's a picture. There's no pictures in here.
No pictures.
Usually there's more evidence attached to the file. So if you want to table it, determine whether or not there's anything else from any other, other departments, you might want to do that.
I'm gonna make a motion to table this item.
Well, just, well, everybody.
I'm just looking at it and.
Yeah, cause the, from Pocelli's, the date on that is 10/12/21.
Right.
So I don't know.
That's when it had, they.
Supposedly have the accident, uh, the pothole was October 27th.
And it was received in the town clerk on November 8th. Yeah, so. Well, it says November 8th, but then it says November 10th.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, I, I would say maybe we need a little more. I mean, it looks like, I'm sure.
Ms. David's not here tonight, correct?
No.
So the 28th, that was denial from the state of Rhode Island, right?
Right.
21st was the actual accident?
Well, I don't know because.
Says that time and date of incident was October 12th, 21, 11:30.
Right, October 12th, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we should table it and wait to see what Fred says and.
I mean, it looks like the pieces are there, um, other than maybe a police report. So. There's an estimate there. I know.
Be three, but only one.
So.
Is the three estimates like a requirement by us or a suggest?
It is a requirement. What the situation happened, I guess, near Pocelli's? No.
No.
October 12th.
No, no.
Yeah, it's totally different.
So if they towed, or the vehicle, if they towed it, um, normally they would have, I would think, an address where they picked it up.
Well, th- there is a West Warwick Police Department voluntary accident report.
Which that standard, they can come in and do that themselves, correct?
That's usually right, yeah.
We think that.
You can write whatever you want.
Table it, you can get verification of whether or not the pothole was there.
That's, that's the question. Did, did DPW go out and fill a pothole in that vicinity? You know, and I'm sure it's, it's, it's probably still there. If it's, you know, it's not like it's changed.
Not.
No, not the pothole, but, but the asphalt.
Still be there too.
I'm gonna be talking to Jeff if that's the case, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, let's, but I, I agree. I think we should table this and put it on next agenda for further investigation.
Just so you're aware, council, council president, I excused the DPW director tonight after the wake because he's coming back at 11 for sidewalk, snow removals.
1365 Main Street.
Times.
Valley Times.
Right, and I believe they said it was on the, uh, the opposite side of the street coming towards the town hall, correct?
Just want to double check it, see what's.
I, I went out there and looked at that particular spot. And there was no pothole on that side that had been recently filled or a pothole at all. Right, right directly across from AJ's.
So what we, what we need to do is take a look in the area, maybe reach out to the resident, take pictures and verify.
Yeah, I went all the way from AJ's all the way up to, uh, Legion Way. And, uh, there was nothing on that particular side where they said that happened that was recently filled or even looked recently filled. So, but I will check it out again.
All right. And if we can provide pictures so we have it.
Okay.
If you find one. If you can't find a pothole in West Warwick, we're in trouble. All right, um, I had a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
You made the motion.
Well, then Mark did, so I wasn't sure what was on.
And you seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Request from National Grid in Verizon, New England for installation of new P9-50 and installation of new pad mount transformer on Archambeau Avenue.
Move to approve the resolution, move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Upcoming appointments. Sewer use board review, one alternate member vacancy with a term to expire October 2024 and one vacancy with a term to expire October 2023. Pension committee, one vacancy with a term to expire November 18th, 2023. Board of Assessment and Review, one reappointment with term to expire 3/2025. Board of Canvassers, one reappointment with term to expire 3/2028. West Warwick Public, Public Library Trustees, two reappointments with terms to expire February 2025. The Tree Warden, which has been filled tonight, thank you. And, um, Planning Board, one vacancy with term to actually, yes, one vacancy with term to expire July 2026.
And number two was filled tonight as well.
Right, yes, it was. Right.
I have a comment.
Yeah, it was Denise Lopez. It was Denise. Just real quick before we go on, um, I want to thank the DPW and the, and the, the police department for the storm responses. Um, very impressed with, uh, the amount of snow that we had and how fast it fell. Uh, the, I only had a handful of complaints and when I reached out to either the chief or Fred or, or Jeff, I mean, they were handled pretty quickly and, uh, so I want to thank you for that. And I also want to thank the residents because everybody who reached out to me was very polite. Uh, nobody was being like difficult in any way, shape or form. They all understood. It was a blizzard. It was two feet of snow. So I want to thank the residents as well.
They were very understanding. They know we're still working and they, we're still working on clearing out areas and widening some streets, and they're trying to do it without interrupting their driveways and their sidewalks and making them reshovel, so.
Yeah.
I would also say the communication from DPW to all of us to keep, including the school, um, administration. They, I think it was fantastic, so.
Now, Jeff, Freddie and DPW, every time I've sent out a response, it's been done within 24 hours, so.
Denise does want to comment when.
All right, we'll get to her for a second. Alan?
No, let, let Denise go first, cause I think I'll be longer.
Okay. Denise Lopez.
All right, hello?
Just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Denise Lopez, um, 35 Fox Run, East Greenwich, Rhode Island. Thank you very much and apologies. I wasn't sure if you were allowing public comment earlier on the topic or now. Um, I have a question, and if you can't be specific to MedRecycler, if you could, um, be specific to Process, it's a question of what's going on over at 1600? Cause I've asked, um, Mr. Not a couple of times, like, is there equipment in the building? No one seems to know. This week, we saw movement of the Bay's open equipment leaving the building. If there was, you know, we realize it went through the town planner, through DEM. If you have something that was in progress with the town, but they no longer reside in that building, who gets notice of that so that the public would know?
If somebody, I can, I can say, I can say in general to any building in West Warwick, if a business leaves, we rarely wouldn't know, um, until we saw, unless they, like, for instance, we'll use Westcott House. They made it public that they were leaving and closing their doors. But if they just closed their doors, the only way we would catch it by word of mouth. The town would not get it, you know, it's not up to Westcott House to tell us that they're closing unless they, you know, they're not renewing a license or something to that extent. So that's, that's where that would be. So if, if a, if a business left town, they don't have to tell us per se.
Well, we'd also know come tax season, when we send them a tax bill, if we don't get a response, you know, then when all the follow-up's done, we'd know at that point.
Yeah.
Well, cause, cause just, this has been so high profile. I would like to think that someone could be proactive to let the public know the status of that building. I mean, I can certainly call the leasing agent. I can make a lot of calls myself, but I would like someone from the town of West Warwick, and maybe I'm asking too much. Just to tell us, Mr. DeFiori, I don't know if you could speak to that. Like, can anyone follow up on this to see what the status is even from their position in the building?
Uh, the, the, the only thing I can speak to is that the company MedRecycler has come to the town seeking to do a particular type of business. DEM said they cannot do that type of business. So there is nothing pending for that type of business before the town of West Warwick today. If they want to use their business, uh, for some, if they want to use that building for some other, uh, project, you know, that they can follow whatever steps might be necessary. The only thing I can speak to is that MedRecycler, their pyroanalysis, and I can never say the word.
Pyrolysis. Trust me, nobody, we've, we've all heard more of it than we ever would expect to in our lifetime, more than the scientists even.
As of today, is not going into that building. Whatever the, the adjudication division says, I can't speak for. Um, I have no, I, no, no expertise as to what the, their chances are or anything else. But all I can say is that as of today, no pyroanalysis business will be in that building.
Okay, so to your knowledge, they are leaving that building?
I have no knowledge what they're doing with the building.
Okay, but you know that they're not gonna, you know, they're not gonna do the act of pyrolysis in that building, but you don't know what's happening with the equipment that's been in that building.
I, I, I didn't, I, as of today, they're not gonna do pyroanalysis in that building. If, if, if the, if DEM all of a sudden changed its mind, I, I don't know what the future is, but as of today, no, they're not gonna do pyroanalysis in that building.
And then what happens if they've moved their equipment out of that building? And if they look to a different, like hypothetically, again, if I'm beating a dead horse, forgive me, but because it looks like equipment is either, more equipment's either being moved in or equipment's being moved out. So say a new tenant comes into that building. Do they have to start all over with the West Warwick Planning Board if they were to choose, I, I, you know, I would highly doubt that they'd be in West Warwick, but if they choose to stay and look, they would have to start all over again? Like if they leave, if they leave, if they take their equipment out of 1600 and a new tenant comes out and it comes into that space, does it negate anything that they put forward to the town of West Warwick? So they came forward to the planning board with a plan for 1600 or any business for that matter. We have an idea.
Are you asking me if MedRecycle tries to go somewhere else, do they have to start over?
Yes. If, if they vacate that, if they vacate 1600 and a new tenant goes in that spot, what happens to the status of their application with the town of West Warwick?
It's, it's, I gotta start over again.
Okay, but in no.
They, they, they came in to put a me, a pyroanalysis, they came in to put a business. I'm done with that word. They came in to put a business in that building. Once that, as of today, they cannot put that business in that building. If they want to put that building, that business somewhere else, I'm going to assume that for the nature of the business, they gotta start all over again.
Okay, okay, cause we've just been, you know, again, the public would just like to know, and I guess I'll wait for a change of the sign of the guard on that sign, and that will be my notice as well as yours, is what everybody's telling me. No one in the town gets notice, even though this has been high profile. If they vacated that building until they, cause I'm not sure that they paid taxes on whatever minute amount that you had, nobody was real, you know, I, I don't want to get into semantics, cause I know you, you don't want to discuss at, at town council, but just trying to understand from a process point. We, I would know as, like, just any person walking on the street to see that sign changing is the only notification we would get if someone else went into 1600. Cause the town.
My guess, my guess is that if someone else goes into that building, they probably, for whatever business they want to put in that building, are going to have to go through the planning process. That would be my guess, you know, I can't.
And I've asked if any other applications have been given for there, but I haven't heard of any confirmation, but it's I believe there, you know, again, it's all rumor until someone can confirm this for me, which is what I'm, you know, why I came, you know, one, to listen tonight to what the update was and two, to see if anyone did.
Application. So. Sorry, but I have a question. Maybe we can clarify this all up. MedRecycle did have to come before planning due to the type of business. But for instance, that's an industrial slash business district, correct?
Correct.
If, and I know next door, there's a gym, gym source, like they sell all gym equipment. Let's just say that type of business went in that building, a gym source or a company that's not doing, you know,
Medical stuff.
medical stuff or whatever, would they still have to come before planning?
I was just about to say that I can't give you a blanket statement as to whether or not any business that goes in there would have to come before planning. I would have to see what the business is, discuss it with our town planner and determine whether or not it fit within the type of businesses allowed. And they may need some, some relief. It's a question that can't be answered without knowing the specifics, David.
Okay. Would it be fair to say, though, that some businesses may not have to go before the planner, but others would?
I would think that that, there is a possibility of that. I mean, I'd have to go, I have not, I gotta go through the zoning code and see what, what businesses, I'm sure there are certain businesses that have permitted uses within the business park. Those businesses, if they don't need setbacks, they don't need variances or special use permits, yeah, they can go in. Our business park is, has some strange things to it. Businesses of certain size have to go get planning approval and zoning approval, even though they're authorized in the park. So it's a situation, Mark, that I wouldn't want to give you a general answer. I would, each case has to be taken on its, on its, on its facts. You give me the facts of it, I then go to the zoning code, see, start off with, is it a permitted use in the business park? If it's a permitted use, that's step number one. Does it fit the square footage requirements? If it fits that, that's step number two. Does it need zoning? Does it need, so you know, it's a question where I don't like to make statements in general where it is so fact-specific. I hope I'm making myself clear.
There is mine.
Counsel, just so you're aware, after, after a communication with Ms. Lopez a couple of months ago, I did call the leasing agent. Perhaps I made a mistake identifying myself on the voicemail. I didn't get a call back, apparently, because I'm not going to lease it, but I can try that again. It was more just out of curiosity than I'm obviously compelled to tell us anything. As long as they're paying taxes as the overall business.
Yeah, it is pretty odd because as Ms. Lopez said, this has been a high-profile case, but even the media hasn't reported anything on it as of late, and as much as I've asked around here and there, I'm getting no answers and you're getting no answers. So it's not that people aren't asking questions, it's just that nobody seems to have any answers. So we're kind of, we're kind of as frustrated as you are, Ms. Lopez.
No, thank, and I would rather someone with the authority in the town to go to the space rather than, you know, I'm, you know, within the parameters of what's acceptable for that space, like with the tax assessor or different people that could go and find out what's going on. That's really what I'm asking without, you know, because I think everyone would like to put this to, you know, to rest if it truly is going in that direction. So that's, that's where, you know, it seems like it should be very simple, but for whatever reason, you know, I know the marketing firm they're working with is no longer engaged with them. And they're certainly not going to give a straight answer at this point. But if you go over to the site, there is equipment as of the other day, more so like in the parking lot in large quantities. So it would look, you know, again, I could, we could speculate one way or another that something's going in or something's coming out. But regardless, there's a lot of extra stuff going on at that, at that site. We're just looking for answers. And in the same vein, one more thing looking for answers to, and it may not be here, maybe more planning board related, but because everybody knows that I follow what's going on over there, a lot of people would like to know what's going on with the vacant lot in front of, because when you can see through the trees to the metro, like the bays. Was there something going to be developed on that land that was cleared? I had heard a.
That wouldn't be properly before you because bed recycling was on the agenda earlier tonight with the lot in front of bed recycling, that wouldn't be appropriate for discussion.
And no, no worries. I'll follow up with everyone after the fact, but so MedRecycler, if anyone within the parameters, within the parameters of the council, the council to try to find an answer about, or I'll just keep doing my own due diligence. And again, more so because when this saga began, it was a business license coming forward to the town council. So not trying to, you know, and I work with my town council and East Greenwich to get updates as well.
So. Ms. Lopez, I just want to correct you on that. It wasn't a business license. It was a business registration.
Okay, that's fair enough. It's, but it was something that came forward to the council.
Yep.
So that's the only reason why you guys are getting, you know, you guys have been a part or a point, point for the public.
It didn't come through anyway, though.
No, it never came before us, but it was on the agenda to come, but it was as a business registration, not a license. I just want to clarify that.
Nope, that's, that's fine. And it was because of the pandemic and whatnot, but we've certainly come full circle and just looking to provide the public with an update, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment, Via?
No one has their hand raised at this.
Alan?
Alan Blazlo, Five Robin Lane, West Warwick. And to add on to Mrs. Lopez's comments with regard to what's going on. If you look at some of the websites on social media, you can definitely see equipment out there. Someone alluded to the Connex boxes that I had talked about before. I'm not sure if they're the same ones, but the equipment's out there. In addition, point of order, point of fact, when I took those pictures of those Connex boxes, some people took umbrage at that. They installed cameras inside the building, outside the building. Since you guys have subpoena power, you might want to ask to see the video of what came out, what or is going in to give you guys a better idea of exactly what is transpiring. But I digress. I have a lot of items for this evening. One is with regard to the elderly exemption, and I'm glad to see you're looking at it, you're exploring it. But as was pointed out, you also have, as Mr. Bourget indicated, the statewide exemption. Perhaps our General Assembly delegation can work on that in conjunction with the town so that they could put forth a statewide policy with regard to a freeze. Seems like the wealthy communities provide it and the poor communities don't. It's maybe it's time that you look at it from both perspectives. So I just wanted to point that out. The Luso monument, I had to look that one up to ensure that I had the correct facts with regard to it being Portuguese. Going back to my recommendation on a Veterans Affairs Coordinator, that would fall right in line under his purview to try and push it. So one more time on the Veterans Affairs Coordinator, take a look at that. Hopefully you're moving forward with it. River Point remediation. I'm just going to put that out there one more time. It's not going to go away until the public gets some answers. Snow on the sidewalks. Code Red went out tonight, okay? Yesterday, I happened to be driving through Natick where I grew up, and I recall the elderly, everybody out there clearing a path on the sidewalks. And if you drive through Natick today, you'll see, you know, fifty-foot section cleared, the two-hundred-foot section with nothing, a hundred-foot section cleared. And what concerns me, having just retired from a teaching position, I used to be terrified of seeing kids in Warwick walking on Post Road because the sidewalks were covered, okay? West Warwick does have the ordinance. I believe several years ago, there was a move to maybe buy a piece of equipment to clear the sidewalks in Arctic. I'm not sure if that was ever done. We're going way back, but maybe it's a time for DPW to consider that, maybe one, maybe two, the high school area, to clear the sidewalks and get that done, especially if you could get it under the American Recovery Act, pot of gold. So just something to think about. And in my research for the West Warwick ordinances, DPW has this great handout. I mean, I commend them on it. It was, it's concise, it covers the facts, it covers the information. But it doesn't do any good unless the people know that it's out there, probably on the town site and the DPW site. It's very, very good. Now, I published a public service announcement about that, and there were some responses. And one of them came back to enforcement. It's great to have the ordinance, but it doesn't do anything if you don't enforce it. And we've had the question before, enforcement of ordinances. I'm not sure if that would be under the Police Department, the Building Inspector, something, writing a citation, and then it gets handled from there. It's just something to consider.
We've discussed it a couple of times since I've been on the council. I know like the consensus at the time, last time we brought it up was if you find one person, you gotta find everybody, and then it becomes a penalty on some of the elderly or.
Imagine that. Imagine getting away from the broken windows syndrome. If the sidewalks are covered and look like they're garbage, it's just going to continue that way. If you fix it, maybe things will improve. That's my point, okay? You have an ordinance for a reason. It's not like selective enforcement of the law. The law is for everybody, and I'm sure the town manager would agree with that. So if we're going to enforce it, let's do it or get rid of the ordinance. As I said, I'm afraid some kids are gonna be whacked. I read a story tonight about some mother who had to actually clear a little area for, for kids to be out of the road while they were waiting for the bus, okay?
That's another, that's a question I had myself today. I was going to reach out to the school department. You may know this, like, for fire hydrants, I know that we know where they all are, and the fire department goes out, and for the most part, the fire department clears almost all of them unless the resident does it correct. For the bus, for the bus stops, I don't know if we have a protocol where we clear the bus stops, but if not, it's something to maybe put on a future agenda or reach out to the school department to, at the very least, clear up. I know that was the Earl Street one that you probably saw on social media today. If not, it might have been another one, but that's the one I saw today, so it's definitely something to consider.
It's something to consider. Another item. I know a resident of the town who was provided with the bill for ambulance services of two thousand dollars. Okay? Now, I go back, as I said, I'm the corporate memory. I'm the worst nightmare. I remember when that was first instituted as a way to help the town recoup some of the costs for providing ambulance services. People pay taxes. I always considered that to have been part of the agreement with the town. Then we came up with the, let's try and recoup it from the insurance companies. To me, that seems like a lot of money, especially considering this person had an ambulance bill of six hundred dollars going all the way to Boston. Two thousand dollars for West Warwick seems a little exorbitant. So it's just something you might want to take a look at. Along the same lines, you meant, talked about mental health conditions. A lot of people are depressed right now. I'm not sure how true this is, but someone said that the West Warwick Fire Department seems to be making a lot of runs for overdoses, administration of Narcan. I was wondering if this would fall under the same category and the town could be reimbursed from the same pot of gold to cover that, but it's something to take a look at. Think outside the box. Do something to improve the town. And my Bravo Zulu, as we would say in the Navy, to DPW, I think they did a great job. And the last item I'll leave you with is tonight, I see on the agenda, executive session. Here we go. And it says malicious damage to the town of West Warwick. I'm not sure if you're looking at coming up with an ordinance to cover that or if there's a specific case in mind. Either way, why is that an executive session? Why isn't that in an open discussion before the council? I'll leave it at that. And something to think about. One case I can see for sure. The other one, very nebulous. Thank you.
Good evening. Derek Reed, sixty-two hundred ZF. I overworked my father, so he couldn't come in here, but he gave me a little note to read. He's got a question for Mr. Bourget. He says, where are you with the possible omissions and errors pertaining to a Factory Street playground in the noon's land right of way?
I'll reserve comment on the Factory Street Playground for now. The binders, I'm getting down to the point now where I'm going to be starting to reach out to people, see if they'll be willing to answer some questions.
Okay.
So.
Let's just step in the right direction.
It is.
Forest Tree Warden, thank you.
I, I have put a lot of hours into this. I've gone through those two binders on my second time through now, just to make sure I have it all clear in my head and as clear as I can make that five-year mess. But yes, it's, I'm still working on it.
All right. And I agree with Alan with the, with the sidewalks as far as going up to the school and stuff. Yesterday morning, I brought my son to school up there, and this morning, the traffic is incredible because obviously the parents are nervous for the kids at the bus stops and the sidewalks. Every other community in this state, because I'm all over the state when it snows, has some sort of machine that keeps up with the sidewalks, where the operator is nice and warm inside. And they don't have this problem. I think with the money being spent lately and the toys being bought, to add one more toy to the list is going to benefit the public during these big storms. And yeah, we don't get them all the time, but even an eight-inch storm of snow on the ground, by the time you plow from the middle of the road to the side, it's two feet. And by the time they lay it over, it's another two feet. In Factory Street, somebody ran a snow blower all the way up the hill to the school. But they need to, so somebody's got to do it, make cutouts. Because they, they go on the middle and there's a berm on the side. There's no cutouts for the kids to get into the sidewalk. So they're walking up the hill on Factory Street in the street if they don't get onto the sidewalk from the bottom of the hill, which is a big problem, I think.
Well, that's a question I'm going to ask is, and I know, and Jeff, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot because I know you're here. Over the past few years, it's always been in conjunction with the school department and the DPW to clean the sidewalk from the beginning of Factory Street all the way up. And we usually go in with the Bobcats and whatever and haul it out. I'm not sure. I'm not sure, and I, I, I'm gonna be honest, I have not been towards.
Right now, it's only like a small path from a snowball going straight up.
Yeah, but I'm talking about if the bridge and everything was cleared, so I don't, and I don't know if that bridge has been cleared, I have not been up Factory Street in over a.
I'm just saying, right now, I mean, it's, it's, it's dangerous.
But again, we're looking at it, I know they're working tonight from eleven P M, clearing off some sidewalks and doing whatever.
In my neighborhood today, I cleared some sidewalks, and I cleared the bus stop.
You know, and, and we all, you know, anybody with a plow knows this storm, we tried to help as much as we can, especially there was some hot attacks thrown with the end of everybody's driveway, um, even though it was light and not wet, it was still a lot of.
I think, I think you guys should really start looking into a sidewalk machine of some sort, there's, there's, there's a multitude of options out there.
No, we, we agree.
And it just, and then just, somebody just stays in it and just keeps up with it as it's going, I mean, you don't, you can't do all the sidewalks on your side streets, but at least your main roads. And then the most important part, like I said, if you're gonna create that burn, which is smart, it slows down the snow from coming over from the trucks, but at least make some cutouts, so that people can access that path instead of having to wait till they get to the red light where the crosswalk is. That's all I got.
Thank you. Somebody's working on it, yep.
But they, they were working on it there, so I'm just not positive if they got and they helped us out by doing the sidewalk.
We were very, I know, we were tied up, and we're still, and we're still.
Jeff, could you do that before the next storm? Could you work with the school to get a list of bus stops? Because I think that's a at least a start to doing, at least a start to like coming up with.
Yeah, Kenny's the guy, he'll have that information.
Much like, much like the fire, I mean, with the hydrants, what within, I mean, that's one of the first things you guys do after a storm, right, is go out there and shovel hydrants, I mean, we could easily, we could, I mean, I think we could possibly put something similar in place for, for the bus stops. And we probably have more time with the bus stops, because usually there's some time before they go back to school, but.
You just gotta keep in mind that no matter what you do in a situation like that, there is a lot of bus stops in this town.
Yeah, the number of people would be crazy.
Going to take a ton of time. A ton of time, whatever you guys decide is, is whatever we do, but that's, that's, you know, that's. Well, you gotta figure, you gotta figure they stop at almost every driveway.
One bus, yeah, every day to work.
I'd be scared to count. I'd be scared to count.
Don't compare.
But you all still, no, again, right, don't compare, but I, I, I mean, I understand exactly where you're coming from, and I understand where the residents are coming from. But you're talking a lot of, uh, a lot of extra time, and I can get prices on sidewalk machines like that. It's totally up to you guys, but uh.
But sidewalk machines.
Yes, yes, so.
Thank you, but yeah, it's, it's up to you guys, but that's a lot of time, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff, you have a comment um from Pete Cattrall.
Pete, just take your name and address for the record.
Pete Cattrall, twenty-five, no Wiki Street, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Um, in reference to the sidewalk, um, they bought this big hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar swale mower last year in uh, the former DPW director, Mr. Olet, said that there were several attachments that could be purchased at a later date. Is there some kind of attachment that could be attached to that swale mower?
I think they make snow blower attachments for them.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, it's like a, it's like a huge brush, because I know he said that.
Well, the brush wouldn't do good for snow, it'd be, it'd be a snow blower, it's so.
That, that's just something to look into, I don't know how cost-effective i- if it would be cheaper to buy that attachment or to have um the town manager or the DPW director buy a sidewalk machine when you already have one that you've just gotta decipher which ones.
Which is cheaper, that's all, all right, thank you, Pete. Any other comment, Pete?
Nope, that's it, thank you, David.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, I need to move into.
Executive session, council may vote to move to executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two litigation. One, malicious damage to town property, and two, Kelsey versus West Warwick, KC twenty sixteen dash zero seven seven six. Move to go into executive session.
Executive, all in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it.